For the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unerdogged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please, Carol.
Mayor Sheets.
Present.
Greg Miller.
Present.
Jim Skinner.
Present.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the minutes from the May 12th, 2025 regular meeting.
The minutes that I'm asking you, asking you to pass are the ones that I just handed to you in that separate packet. They're just a couple of corrections. There's no, no substantive changes?
No.
I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes from May 12th, 2025.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay, next we have the claims.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the claims as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay, were there any public comments? Anybody have anything they'd like to say? This is your chance. Okay, next we're going to have a swearing in of a police sergeant. Chief Shoemaker.
Maybe.
You're going to bring them all in here, aren't you?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have all this stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
He has a pocket.
Everybody come here. All right, Mayor, Board of Works, I'm honored to come before you tonight in request that you promote Officer Ethan Cunningham to the rank of Sergeant. Officer Cunningham joined the Frankfurt Police Department on September 5th, 2022. In 2024, he was assigned, where you at? Come up here. In 2024, he was assigned to our K-9 unit and was also selected as Officer of the Year. Ethan has been a quick learner. He has shown leadership ability in his short time here at the Frankfurt Police Department, and I am proud of his work, and I ask that you, the board, promote him to Sergeant effective immediately.
Mayor, I will take the recommendation of Chief Shoemaker to promote Ethan Cunningham to the position of Sergeant, and we are pleased to be doing this tonight, and I think you've been a great decision.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Prove that for motion. Repeat after me. I, Ethan Cunningham.
I, Ethan Cunningham.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Indiana.
The State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As Sergeant.
As Sergeant.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hold on, you went too fast.
Give me to act like I'm writing.
Yep. There we go.
I can't, if I write it slow, it looks.
I know.
She said she wants to vote.
It says, right?
Put it back.
All right, that's it.
Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You want everybody.
Well, you're definitely.
Oh, no, you're fine. Go ahead, you can move.
Been all right, man. Haven't just lived it right.
Oh, yeah. Okay, okay.
No stress. Well, our baseball season could be over tomorrow. Sectional starts tomorrow. Dry West, they're ranked. We can beat them. We also got Garen, we got Ruff. It's loaded. It's stacked. But we can win it. 3-8. I will. I miss you guys. I don't miss the job, but I miss you guys. Yeah. All right, see you.
Okay, Scott said he would come back for the rest of his report.
Okay.
Building Services. Who's going to talk for Building Services? Permit be waived.
I think that's all we got tonight.
Oh, no, you're not leaving. Okay, okay. So are you going to present that?
Yeah, in your packet, you have a permit for the Clinton County Community Corrections Facility. They moved to 400 East Clinton Street. We did a final occupancy on that building for them, and they're asking, we're asking that the fees be waived for that.
I'll make a motion that we waive the fees for Community Corrections as presented.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay, it's been waived. Don, do you have anything?
Thank you.
I don't have a link, but I know what it says.
Did you write it?
No, Don wrote it. I revisited though.
Thank you.
Don's trying to get in on being a paralyzoid.
I asked Mr. Clark to show up this evening also to talk, help me talk this through, to make sure that I'm not misleading anybody, but part of our ADA requirements is that the, the city should have some type of a policy or the allowing of service animals in our, in our facilities. So what is a service animal? Service animal is a small dog or a major horse in limited circumstances. That's been individually trained to perform tasks for the benefit of a person with a disability, and the task it performs must be directly related to the person's disability. That person also has to be responsible for the care and feeding and taking care of their animals while they have them, and it have to be, when they're in the facility, they have to be on a tether or a leash to prevent animals from, so they can do their task, and service animals are responsible to their handler's command. So we do not have a policy or anything in place that gives the directions of the service animal. So I've asked Mr. Tim to step in today to kind of guide us through on why we need this and the requirements, and it, it's a part of our fulfillment of our ADA requirement as we move forward and, and try to be, be ADA proper. So Mr. Clark, if you'll help me through this.
I will. Thanks, Don. Mayor, board members, attorney and clerk treasurer. As part of the ADA and for you guys to fulfill your requirements, you do have to have a service animal policy, which follows the guidelines of ADA. And as Don just read, it's, it's a small dog or a miniature horse are the only two. I do want to bring up that, the things that, we hear this a lot, and that is comfort animals. Comfort animals do not fall under ADA in any way, shape, or form. Doesn't mean that you can't accept a policy, but ADA does not see comfort animals as ADA. But it's, it is your requirement to have a policy in place that if somebody does come into your facility, that your employees know, and it could even be an employee, that they know what the policy is to allow, you know, that they can't tell somebody that they have to leave. There are two questions that you can ask if somebody does bring an animal in, and that is, is this a service animal, and what is the animal trained to do? Those are the only two questions you're allowed to ask somebody. Due to HIPAA, you're not allowed to get into any other questions to find out what the issue may be. If they want to divulge that information, that's perfectly fine, but you can't ask those, any questions outside of those two. So again, we need a policy in place to show that, and the employees know what the policy is, that they can bring a service animal if necessary, and/or somebody coming into your building that you can't just turn them away because they, they are bringing a service animal into the building.
So is this for our employees along with the general public, or we need two different policies, or can just one?
One policy will cover both.
Would that be resolution?
So you can adopt the policy just by adopting the policy, and then for the employees, I did prepare an employee acknowledgement form that the employees would need to, need to sign, and then as far as our policy, that could be something that could be published in the building on like a, you know, sign or something, or it could be on our website, those sorts of things, so that the public is aware that they are allowed to bring service animals into the building. For the employees, anytime that we do a policy, you can just approve the, the policy, but then I do recommend for Human Resources that all the employees get a copy of the policy and that they sign an acknowledgement that goes in their personnel file, so that way they're aware of the policy and we have informed them of it.
That is correct.
So who would provide the policy?
I will write a policy for this, for the city, for you to, and I'm not sure your protocol, but is it something that comes just to Board of Works, or are you taking it to council?
Generally, it would just be Board of Works, because they're the ones that administer the, oversee the administration of the city.
So I will have something to Dawn by the end of the week.
So is that something that we would have to give a new employee, or would that just be if an employee wanted to bring a service animal?
You need to put it in your employee handbook.
Well, it, so for the employees, it would be twofold. Number one, it would be saying, hey, if you are a person who has a disability and you need a service animal, you are allowed to have them as part of, with your employment, you're allowed to bring the service animal. The second prong to that is if you are an employee of the City of Frankfurt and a member of the public comes in with a service animal, you are aware that that person is allowed to bring that service animal in, and we have a policy that says that they are welcome in the city. They won't get kicked out or anything like that. So it's kind of twofold. So what we would do, just like with any other policy, is it would go, it should be incorporated into the employee handbook, but since we're doing it after the fact, that's why we have that acknowledgement that they would then sign and put in their personnel file, so that they, because it's not in the handbook, they would acknowledge that they've had it.
So I'll put the policy together. Do you want me, Alicia, when I put it together for them to sign this, do you want two separate pages, or do you want it as one with two separate paragraphs, as far as what the employee's going to sign?
I don't really care. I have a standard employee acknowledgement form that we can use. I can, I think I sent that.
You did.
To Dawn, probably has a copy of it. So we can, we can use that form, or if you want to use something else, that's fine with me, but.
If you have a form already, let's use the one that you have.
So usually what I do is whatever we label the policy, like if it's a service animal policy, then we just put in the acknowledgement form, you know, that I received a copy of the service animal policy, and I've read it, and da, 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 and then they sign that, and we put that in their file.
Perfect. So I will come, I will be in your office tomorrow afternoon, and we'll make sure we have this done, and then, I'm not sure when your next meeting is, but I want it in your hands sooner than later. That way you have a chance to read it, and for the next board meeting, you're, we're all ready to go.
So are there like federal guidelines, or something that has to be in this, or?
Yeah, I have the copy of what's come.
But we still have to do our own policy.
That is correct.
Even though it's.
Yes.
So usually those policies will incorporate all of the federal and state guidelines into the policy, but then locally, we, in order to comply with the federal regulations for ADA accessibility, we will just incorporate those in, usually by reference, but we, we do our own policy to acknowledge that we are going to follow all of the rules of the state and the federal government.
Correct.
Does that policy designate the difference between a service animal and a comfort animal?
It only, it'll, it'll cover the, the service animals.
Okay.
We can put something in there to show.
Well, in, if, in your paper, it says that a service animal is a dog or a miniature horse, so it's nothing else.
And, and the other distinction between a service animal and an emotional support animal or a comfort animal is that they have to have specific training, and they have to be, they have to qualify as a service animal with that training. So emotional support animals don't have any regulations on the qualifications or the training that they have to have. I could bring my dog, who is an absolute nightmare, and she could be a comfort animal if I got a doctor's note saying that I needed her, even though she is a disaster and has zero training. So.
And to follow up on that, the, the federal guidelines, the DOG, DOJ has that spelled out, and we'll reference it back to what the language is that they want us to have on the service animal.
So because of that, since the definition of service animal is so distinct, I don't know that we necessarily need to call out an emotional support animal at all, because the service animal definition would by nature exclude an emotional support animal.
Correct.
So can we just ask, do we need a motion?
So I think at this point, we don't have the policy. So this was just bringing it to your attention to see if you guys were on board with getting a policy drafted. So we can, it sounds like from consensus, we're fine with that, so we will get the policy drafted and then get that back at the next meeting, and then at that point, we'll approve the policy and then get it out to the employees.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Parks Department, you're up.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Okay, so the first thing I have for you guys tonight is this upcoming weekend, Saturday, we are starting our first concert series, which would be the Luna World Cast, starting at 6:30, followed by the Brass Tracks. After that, food vendors will be Bruno's Pizza and C-N-R Catering. And Angry Donkey will be there serving as well as at the event.
Okay, good.
Just wanted to bring that up to you guys. Okay, so the next thing I want to talk about here is I have an employee want to change a position from a repair pool technician back down to a park labor. I'm looking for approval for.
That's in your new information, and you also got an email on it today?
Yeah.
Yes.
How do you feel about that change?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. That was Clifton, right?
Yes, it was.
What was the reasoning he wanted to switch?
Health issues.
Okay.
And I did let HR know today. You may have talked to him as well, and I told him that I was okay with that change, because he already has actually given up the position, right?
Yeah, as of Fri, actually, he talked to us Friday about it. It was just later in the day, so we just waited till today to.
And once it's approved and everything, then you're going to get the information to them and.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of the park employee from the position of park repairer and pool technician back to a full-time park labor.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next thing I have for you guys is Joe Rogers with the Christian Motorcyclist Association is wanting their fee waived for Veterans Park on August 22nd from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
That's in your new information again?
It is.
It should be in that stack.
Did I grab it with something else?
You can look at this one.
Okay, so tell me again what this is.
The Christian Motorcyclist Association, Joe Rogers, is wanting their fee waived.
Okay, this is for, for, no veterans?
Veterans Park, yes.
Is there a fee for veterans?
No, I think it's just because it's an event that he was wanting to hold and then use it, just like, you know, the requirements like those.
Oh, okay, does that, that doesn't, I'm not going to. Yeah, because I don't think in the past, we've charged for veterans, have we? And if, I mean, I'm okay if you guys can reserve it, or.
Basically, I think that's the reason, just to.
Yeah.
Make sure he was able to get it.
Okay. And what are they going to have?
It's a motorcycle association group, I assume. I don't know exactly what it is.
Is it a cruise inn?
Mm-hmm.
Chief Shoemaker, do you have a problem with that? Might be. It's a, it's a motorcycle group that wants to be at Veterans Park about 100 and.
Fifty.
Is that 150 bikes, or, yeah?
It says 150 attendance.
You're okay? I'm o, I'm okay?
There's like no wa, no fee to be waived. He's just wanting permission to use the park.
Permission to use it.
So that's okay?
Do we want to make a motion or something?
I'll make a motion that we allow Joe Rogers from the Christian Motorcycles Association to reserve Veterans Park from 6:00 to 9:00 PM on August 22nd, 2025.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay, you can let them know they can use Veterans Park.
Thank you. The next thing I have is I'm needing approval for two seasonal employees.
Okay, now.
That, that's probably not on your thing.
It's not on your.
Because we just.
Was it the ones that you sent an email, or you sent?
One of them, one of them was, one of them is not. We can't, we can't get back ahold of the, the one.
Okay, the one that you.
Yeah, yes.
Asked about, so we're going on to another one?
Yeah, we just interviewed today, and we all actually disoffered him the job today, because he would, he's a.
Outstanding.
Yeah, he was pretty good.
Good, good, yeah. So what we need to do is have the background check and.
It's already, we're working on that.
Okay, and I would, I would be okay, it's up to.
These two positions are already in your budget for seasonal health.
Yes.
I think we have up to, what, five seasonal positions.
Yeah, yeah. And I've looked at your budget, it looked like you're still in pretty good shape for the summer.
Yeah, I believe we can probably hire up to, what, three more seasonal?
I'm going to guess you could, because we're not going to have the extra workers in the zoo, so. Yeah, so I would be okay. I don't know how you feel about it, but if he could get approval on the background check and the drug test, to let him go ahead and start, because we'd have a break before the next meeting, if you need him before then, I'm sure.
Yeah, we're going to try to get him pushed through to maybe start next Monday.
If you can get everything.
Possibly. Cheryl was starting on it today, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that the Parks Department hire, hire two seasonal employees pending the completion of the drug test and other testing to be done.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay, you have approval for those two.
Thank you. The next thing I have is for Prairie Creek Park Event Center, for the Angry Donkey, for their approval for their alcohol.
It's got a staple on it.
Permit?
Yes.
Christie, what day is that?
Where you shuffle it to.
Oh, it's for May 31st. It's a Saturday's concert.
Yeah, the 31st.
Yeah, I got it.
There's your Joe Rogers.
Time down, Joe Rogers.
It should be under that one. There it is.
Okay, sorry, I have all my papers.
That's all right.
Okay.
Did you say this is wanting to sell alcohol, is that correct?
Yes.
And they've already got the okay from excise and ABC and Chief Shoemaker and.
They have a caterer's permission, they don't need my permission.
Okay.
Need to notify me, and they have to.
Okay.
Okay. And it's for those dates that are listed there?
Yes, yes.
There's three dates, right?
Uh, should be just the 30, is it the 31st?
31st is a Saturday, so we want.
And then.
Oh, then the 8, the 9th, and the 10, 4.
Yeah.
Yep.
So there is three.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the alcohol vendor application by the Angry Donkey for the dates of May 31st, August 9th, and October the 4th.
And I will second that motion.
Roll call please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay, you have approval.
Thank you. And last but not least, is the rehoming of the animals, for the list that was presented to you guys.
Christie sent a summarized list in an email, which is in your new materials.
And so.
And you have all of the, the details.
All the ones that are on these lists, right?
You had a few in your original packet, and then one extra one.
Looks like about 11 animals.
Is it, is that right? 11? You want to come up here? You want to come on up here? Is that right?
Yes, it would be the ones that are listed right here, with the sun conures, ring necks, sun conures, cockatiels, parakeets, cockatiels, and then.
Silver foxes.
So that's the number of each one of them, like the cockatiels, there's two, and.
And then the ID number is the asset number.
Okay, thank you.
Can we do those all together?
Yes, you can. Just make sure that you give enough information that we know what you're approving in the minutes.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept the list of animals to be rehomed from the parks as presented by the list, and the according to the ID numbers that are silver, two silver foxes, the cockatiels, the parakeets, two cockatiels, two sun conures, one ring neck, and two sun conures, again, specified by those ID numbers as presented tonight.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay, those have been approved as well.
Thank you.
That's all we have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, Alicia, what do you have for us?
Most of my stuff is in the unfinished business and the new business. Do you want me to go ahead and do that, or Chief Shoemaker looks like he would like to finish his?
Oh, you want to finish yours?
No, I'm ready whenever you are. Okay, I'll go. Okay, I'll go. You can just listen to me talk for the next 30 minutes. So, first thing is the unfinished business, we have the 50/50 sidewalk bids and the contract. So what I did is I looked at both bids and I did a comparison of them side by side, which I sent to you so you could kind of see the different things that were being offered. It's really hard to say which one is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder because they have different numbers for different things, and it really depends on what the sidewalk consists of to determine whether or not it would be lowest. For example, if they were just doing a four-inch thickness sidewalk, then compost construction would be lower, if they were doing, you know, a curb sidewalk combo, then it might be lower to use CNA landscaping. So it just depends on what projects end up coming down the pike, and we don't really know what that's going to be yet. So I put them side by side so you could kind of look at them, and based on the comparison, compost is less expensive if you're just doing residential sidewalks, but CNA landscaping is less expensive for curb sidewalk combo, ADA ramps, fill, and saw cuts. And I don't know, Dawn, you might know more about how frequently we do some of those other things, but...
Great question, and we really don't do a lot of combination curbs because unless they're part of the sidewalk, they're not included in the 50/50 thing, so, so when you say a combination, so like, a sidewalk can be a curb also because it's built like right beside the street, so, but we don't constitute it as a curb because we constitute it as a sidewalk acting as a curb.
Right, so that would fall under the residential sidewalk, then?
I would say yes.
Do we do a lot of, like, saw cuts and, you know, ADA ramps and things like that?
We do not do any ADA, well, the ADA ramps are not included in the 50/50, so let's retract a little bit.
Okay.
And that is, if they're living on a corner and the corner has to be ADA accessible, we have to make that ADA accessible, the city pays completely for that because it's our responsibility as a city to put that, that handicap section in. And we, we have the plates, it's basically just making sure the slope's proper and, and it meets all the requirements. And so we've, we've never, in all of our days that we've done this, that has never been a part of the 50/50, we've, that's all been on the city's side.
Okay, so with that information, I don't necessarily have a recommendation as to which one you select, I think it kind of depends on the whole picture, it sounds like from what Dawn is saying, we're mostly doing residential sidewalks, and the compost construction bid did come in lower on just a residential sidewalk per square foot, both on four-inch thickness and six-inch thickness, the CNA landscaping did not have a thickness associated with it, and it was a little bit more expensive. So based on that, though, I did prepare two contracts, one for each contractor with the appropriate pricing, so whichever one you choose to go with, we are ready to move forward with that. So it's really up to you which one you would like to award, but we need to award one of the bids, and then we'll need to approve the contract so we can get that signed.
One, one more thing too, and that is, Rob made a great point in the fact that Campos', their demolition is part of the pay, it's not part of CNAs, right? CNAs was extra, or they, they didn't put a mount in there for their...
Yeah, it was TBD, I think.
Yeah, so the tear out was all, all part of the, all part of the same pay.
On the compost bid, though, they did say that the removal and disposal was TBD to be agreed upon from city and contractor, so I don't know if in the past they hadn't...
Both is kind of the same, then, okay.
Yeah.
My apologies.
I don't know if in the past they've done it for free, but in this bid that we had, it was TBD also.
I can't remember, I don't, I don't remember, but if the gals were here, they, they would be...
I don't know either, but it doesn't really matter, because what's in front of us is TBD and TBD.
From the last meeting, it was, that was not included in what was spoken about last time.
Okay.
CNA said, "To be determined," and Campos' did, nothing was said about their tear out.
Okay. So based on that information, it's ultimately up to you all which one you would like to select.
Does the city have a documented specifications on sidewalks, on thicknesses, and is this program here?
Yes, we do.
So I just noticed that CNA did not put down the thickness differences here where Campos' did.
Right.
So they're still, have to follow the city regulations on how thick they are, since they're not limited here in what their specifications they submitted, they still have to follow the four or six-inch thickness, is that correct?
Yes.
That's, that's correct, and the reason why there's a difference, and it's kind of a thin margin here, and that is, all sidewalks are four inches thick, and they can be four inch, four feet wide or five feet wide, we try to match up to the sidewalk that we're mounting to. The six inch would occur as if it goes through the driveway, very seldom do we go through a driveway because it's a driveway, we don't, even though the sidewalk goes through it, it doesn't constitute as a, as a walkway, so, or a sidewalk. So if we were replacing a sidewalk that went through a driveway, we would saw cut at the, at the driveway, and we wouldn't go through it because that's part of the driveway, we wouldn't do that. So the six inches not really included in us, in the sidewalk because we don't go through the driveway, if that makes sense. So I'm guessing that they put that in there just in case, now, if the, if the driveway hasn't been in place and they're putting the sidewalk in, then they're going to add a driveway to, now, now we're making that six, that's six inch because that's required, anything from the curb to the back edge of the sidewalk has to be six inches thick.
How does your office work with both of these companies?
We've never worked with CNA, we've worked forever with Campos', and they do, they do a great job, they do a great job, and they're real easy to work with.
Where's CNA, where are they out of, they're out of Frankfurt?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that, that we, after looking at the amount of sidewalks, the type of sidewalks that are generally presented to the city of Frankfurt in the 50/50 sidewalk program, I would make a recommendation for Campos' construction for that program.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay.
And then I do have a contract, if you would like to approve that contract so we can get that signed with Campos', it is the same contract as last year, just updated to this year's numbers and everything, so...
I'll make a motion that we accept the contract with Campos' construction for the 50/50 sidewalk program.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay, so will you contact Campos' or does Dawn, okay, because we'll need that. Okay, yeah, we need that contract signed, so...
I'll get the contract signed by the mayor and pass it along to your office.
Okay, then, did you have anything else under old?
Not under old, just under new.
Okay.
Both of those are...
Okay.
So the first thing under new business is the request for proposals for the Safe Streets for All program. We are getting a federal grant for the Safe Streets for All program, SS4A, and they require that we have a request for proposals so that we can get letters of interest from individuals to create the plan for that program, so that's part of that grant process, and so this is a request for proposals that we will need to publish in the newspaper, and I'm asking for your approval tonight so that way we can get it published and meet our deadlines for that grant. The grant has a selection criteria, and you'll see that in the request for proposals, and then once we get those letters of intent, then we'll have to evaluate those and take them under advisement, and then we'll come up with whichever company comes in for our plan, but essentially what they're doing is they're just going to create the strategy that we're going to use for this grant process.
Kimberly or Brian, do you have anything you want to say about this? Okay. They've been working on it.
They have.
Very hard, very difficult work, isn't it? Takes a lot of time to get this information ready.
I'll make a motion that we accept the request for proposals for the Safe Streets for All program.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
When, when will we get this grant? Isn't there a timeframe that...
They've already been awarded.
So do we have to wait a while, though, before we can get that, because I was thinking, we were told there'd be a while before we'd get the funding, so as soon as we...
This is part of the, this is the waiting game.
Yeah, so, yeah, so what we have to do is we have to meet all of the requirements for the federal government, and then once we do that, then we'll get that actual funding.
Okay, okay.
So this is, yeah, so this is part of the process, and we've got a timeline that we've established for different steps that we need to take in order to get this all finished up, so we get the funding.
Okay, thank you.
Alicia, would you like me to publish that?
That would be great, it needs to get to the paper by Friday, and then I've got the two publication dates on the bottom of the second page, so it would be published on June 11th and June 18th, which I think are the next two Wednesdays.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ready for the next thing?
Yes, please.
Alrighty, last thing I've got is a contract regarding the ownership maintenance and maintenance of the mural, so we have a mural that is going to be paid for by Sciota Zai, is that how you say that?
Sciota Zai.
Sciota Zai, and they are working with an artist that they have contracted with to get that mural put together. Once the mural is put on the wall, and they're finished with all of it, and they've paid for it and everything, they are going to give it to the city, and then the city will be required to take care of it from that point forward. So this contract is with Sciota Zai, if I can say, and they, essentially, it just provides that we're going to have the mural maintenance once we take over the, once we take over the mural, once it's all finished. So this allows them to go ahead and get that process started, they'll work with the contractor and do all of that, and then once it's finished, we'll just take it over.
I'll make a motion that we accept this contract regarding the ownership and maintenance of the mural by Sciota Zai, and I did see Ricardo Cortez's, it's very nice, it's going to be a heck of an addition down there, yeah.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Brian, do you have anything tonight? They're not on the agenda, but... Matt, do you have anything? Kimberly? Okay.
We have Chief Shoemaker.
Oh, I forgot, oh my gosh, I forgot you, I'm sorry.
Can we go ahead and finish this? I think, I think we already closed.
I am so sorry.
Brian and I have a couple of things for you.
Oh.
I emailed the Harvard Terrace Neighborhood Permit for their annual July 4th Neighborhood Parade, I'd asked that the board approve as presented, and it starts at 10:00 AM on July 4th, and the Street Department and the Police Department will work together on that.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the annual 4th of July parade for the Harvard Terrace community on July 4th, 2025.
And I will second that motion, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay, that's been approved.
We have one more, the Healthy Communities Trinity Hope Center, they were going to have a block party, it was canceled due to rain a couple, I think, two weeks ago, they're asking to redo it on June 13th at, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM, they've met with Brian and I, and I, I'm sorry, I just emailed this to all of you about 10 minutes ago, that's why you haven't seen it, they're asking to close Parrish Street, which we have done for them in the past, but this year, due to the amount of people that come, there's been so many people, they're asking to be able to close a portion of Columbia Street, and Captain Sorrels and I and, and Brian have looked into that and found a way for them to safely do that if the board approves both of those road closures.
So what portion of Columbia Street?
From Parrish to the alley, to the, first alley to the north.
First alley to the north, okay.
So you said you and the superintendent are both good with all this, then?
Yes.
Well, I'll make a motion then, on Friday, June 13th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, Trinity Hope Center Annual Block Party can take place in the Columbia and Parrish Streets location that they have submitted.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Jim Skinner.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
That's been approved. You're welcome. Anybody else have anything? Tim?
Tim Clark again, thank you, I just want to bring up three things after listening to the board meeting, one is the mural that you're talking about, I don't know if you guys know that you can go to the Arts Federation, used to be Tippecanoe County Arts Federation, it's just now the Arts Federation, because they represent 13 counties, that they will give you grant money to do things like this, and it's never too late to ask, so I'd recommend that somebody reach out to Tisha and see if you can get something.
The same people, right, Kimberly, that we've been working with as far as the Police Department, so, yeah, we, yeah, we have a couple of times that we've worked with them, so, yeah.
The second thing that I have is, I've gotten a few complaints with the project that the state's doing that they did through town on, what is it, 421, 7539?
39.
Of the things that are not ADA compliant.
Right.
If you guys get any complaints, let Dawn know, because I'm making a list of what those complaints are, that we're taking back to the state to say, you know, you're making us, you're holding our feet to the fire to do the right thing, how are we letting these things get by within the city limits, so, but people are looking at you as the ones doing the project and not them, so...
And I think NDOT's been aware of it, because I met with NDOT, I think Kimberly and I were up there, and Brian, when we received the check for the CCMG, and I brought that to NDOT's attention at that time, and I think Dawn's talked to them, and, I mean, I think they realize it, I just don't, they keep saying they're going to fix things, but it doesn't look very good where they fixed it, particularly Armstrong and Jackson, I'm concerned about that, that looks really bad right there, so...
So then the last thing that I had was, NDOT does have programs too for the intersections for sidewalks with the trungated domes for crossing streets, so it's things that you can reach out to them, I know you got the 50/50 sidewalk project, but you put those bids out, and Dawn was talking about, you know, some of the areas that, we need to make a list of where those areas are, but there is money available out there through NDOT to get those corrected as well.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does anybody else have anything?
I do not.
I'll take the motion.
Second.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for being here this afternoon.